All right, we call to order the work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. We're here in Melody Lane in the Supervisors' Hearing Room. Pursued ARS 38431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call. District One calls, District Two.
Gomez is here.
And District Three, Antonori is here. All Supervisors are present and in person. Today, our agenda item is a budget work session to discuss the county attorney's budget. So we'll go to Ms. Gilman to kick us off.
Okay, as I've done for all of them.
Yeah. Well, you're doing.
Good job.
Yeah.
So today, we have the county attorney's office. They're going to present their budget request as far as some additional funding. As you'll see, there's some familiar trend of a need for salaries and staffing across the county, and I'm sure our county attorney, Lori Zuko, will address that as well. So I'll get over to her.
All right, thank you for having us. I just want to introduce who I have here with me today. Kenny Reeves is my chief of staff, and he is our budget director. I think he said this is his 13th year doing, working on the budget for the county.
It's a bakery, though.
Yeah. He's very familiar with this process. We also have Kristana Watkins. She is our alternative programs, alternative prosecution program manager, and we're going to talk about some of the things, the programs that she runs, and how much money she saves the county, and the revenue that she's been generating. And then also, we have Dallas Bullington, and she is our technology project manager. She's our lead paralegal and our PBK administrator, and she's also been in charge of the project that we've been working on, which is our specific funding request regarding ADRS Legal Secretary Two, and we'll get into that. But it's essentially an unfunded mandate from the legislature to comply with the statute and disposition reporting that we need an extra position for because we're just, we can't do it. So, okay, we have a presentation. Border crimes crisis in response, the massive impact on our system, alternative prosecution programs, cost savings and revenue generation, and funding requests, ADRS Legal Secretary Two. So this is a presentation on the border that I've done for a number of U.S. House of Representative members, a number of law enforcement officers during training, a number of dignitaries who've come to visit. I sort of detail or tailored it for this presentation, but as you all know, January 2021, massive shift in border trends in the country, including in the county. We immediately saw the closure of the three checkpoints, and that led to a huge influx in border crime cases and smuggling activity in our county, massive increase in felony flight cases, and all that that entails, and of course, drug smuggling. So the next statistic that you're going to see is going to be border crime cases filed by the Cochise County Attorney's Office. We started tracking border crime cases as a specific field in PBK, our Prosecutor by Propel system, in 2022, and then in September of 2022 is when the legislature passed the assisting a human smuggling statute that took the place of the old human smuggling statute that was ruled unconstitutional by the Ninth Circuit. And we have been aggressively prosecuting under that statute, and I think we are the only county that decided to do that. And this is our stats. So in 2022, like I said, when we first started tracking it, the border crime stats, that would be the felony flights until, you see the highlighted, September 2022, late in that month was when the human smuggling statute enacted.
Big jump in October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, it was pretty crazy. We had one prosecutor that we brought back to the felony unit who was trying to handle all these cases as like our specialist. It got too overwhelming for her. We did get some DEMA money through the Sheriff's Department. It was part of their grant. We didn't go out and get our own grant. And we had some money that the idea was that we were going to hire a seasoned attorney to come down here and be our DEMA-funded border crime prosecutor. We advertised for that position, spent a lot of money on it, and we were not able to hire someone for the 110. Nobody would come down here to do that for that salary. So what we decided to do was we were going to hire two legal secretary positions, and that was like a trial legal secretary, not the position that we're asking for today. It was like a higher level position. And then we also gave the attorneys extra money, Kenny got this approved by DEMA, if they would track their time, and so like billable hours, and but they didn't get paid by the hour. They got paid an additional amount, but that's all going away on June 30th. We are not asking the county to supplement that additional money through the general funds. We're not. We phased out those two legal secretary positions, and we're going to fill the gap on the attorney's salaries with CJIP money, which is Criminal Justice Enhancement Fund, which has to go towards criminal justice programs like prosecuting cases. And so we lost those two legal secretaries, and even though the border crime numbers you'll see and cases have gone down with the Trump administration, we're still, we still have a backlog of border crime cases that were not charged additionally as 48 hours. They're still coming through the system. We have a first-degree murder on a three fatality border crime case going to trial in May. Huge expense to our office, and so like the costs are still there. But like I said, we phased out those two secretaries. Do you have a question?
Yeah, so what is the ratio on these that go to trial versus what you guys plead?
Well, I would say that most of these cases plead out, but some of them obviously do go to trial. We, here, let me skip ahead, okay? All right, so this is, well, here's just the numbers of cases charged, cases submitted. You can see the historical perspective going back to 2016. They did steadily rise to 2020, but then huge jump in 2022 and 2023. The number went down in 2024 after Kamala Harris, who's Joe Biden, were getting hammered on the campaign trail, and they changed.
Tightened up a little bit.
Mm-hmm, and that's the only reason that that number went down in 2024. Okay, so.
But those are just, when you say submitted, that's referred by law enforcement?
Felony case.
And then you guys make the determination.
That's the other number.
Right.
Case charged versus cases submitted.
But what is the actual number of cases that you guys plead out where you don't have to go to trial and you could save all that money?
We plead out an enormous number of cases, probably over 90%. We plead out probably 73%, low 70s in early resolution court. We have, we found that with the human smuggling cases, here's what we did. If you pulled over and you didn't have significant prior history, we gave you probation.
On a felony?
Yes.
Okay.
So you get a class six, undesignated, and we gave you probation.
And then it reverts to misdemeanor after?
If they complete the probation. A lot of them, a lot of them were out of county. So the JPs were really pretty good. When you would have an out-of-county smuggler come down here, they would hold them on a bond, and a lot of times they posted it, but a lot of times they didn't. And then we would put them in early resolution court, and then most of those people would take the plea, especially if they were getting probation. All the felony flights, we required a prison term on, and but sometimes that would be a short prison term. The way that the 2323 human smuggling statute, the penalties for it was prison mandatory class-two felony. So we had that hammer, but we also had a hesitance because the last human smuggling statute was ruled unconstitutional by the Ninth Circuit. We were always waiting for that one case to challenge it. It never came so far, but it could still come. Go ahead.
So for a felony flight, they take a plea, they go to prison?
Yes, I mean, they would, there are obviously, there are deviations to everything. There could be the case where that didn't happen. There were a couple juveniles that where it didn't happen before, because we prosecuted juveniles as adults on those cases. And so, I mean, there's the occasional one that did it, but our policy that you would have to get a deviation from was that they would go to prison. Now, the prison sentence might not be that long. You know, it might be a year in DOC, it might be whatever, but, but the significance of having them go to prison is then it's not the class-six undesignate. It's the class-six designated felony or the class-five designated felony. So whereas they can't work it down to the misdemeanor. Okay, so, and that's just the participating in the human smuggling statute. Those are the two subsections we prosecute under. Um, yeah, huge increase in the felony cases, and we have a really aggressive charge ratio, and a lot of the, it's, and all the cases, the delta there, if you will, between charged and submitted does not necessarily mean they were all declined. A lot of them were furthered. Like, for instance, it comes in as a 48-hour case, and they don't make admissions to the smuggling, but they seize the phones. Okay, well, then we're going to further it for now. You go get the search warrant for the phone, download the phone, get the activity for the human smuggling on the phone, resubmit it, we'll charge it. And so that's where a lot of the backlog is when I tell you that the border crisis did not just end for our office. We're still getting the, the secondary referrals for the cases that were originally furthered that are now coming back to us because the phones have been downloaded. So it's the, you know, the ripple effect is still ongoing for the office.
So once the phone has been downloaded, then the charges are probably going to be loose?
Or approvable, because if they don't make an admission on the human smuggling, the way that the statute is so carefully worded to ups, to be upheld by the Ninth Circuit, they, we have to prove not just, oh, you have a, an alien in your car and you fled. We have to prove that they were, had the intent to assist the person from fleeing with law enforcement, conceal the person, and that they're knowingly assisting a human smuggling organization. So if they just say, I pitched up, picked up a hitchhiker, we don't have a case without the phone. Okay, so and a lot of times they're, you know, they've now been told, because this is like a cat and mouse game has been going on for a couple of years now, just say you picked up a hitchhiker, but then we get the phone, and it's all the coordination on the phone, and then we can charge. So, yeah. And again, and a lot of, and the cases that probably are the most litigated obviously have been these fatalities. So nine fatal collisions, 13 deceased victims, and here's some of the outcomes. William Brown was the very first fatality for human smuggling that we had. That was January 2021. It was like right off the bat, and he did go to trial. It was a month-long trial, and he ended up being convicted of two natural life sentences. And of course, he would not take any plea. The litigation expense for that trial is significant, but obviously warranted, we're trying to send a message, and that message that we did send did, did reverberate through the jail, because then we were able to get, because I think there was a feeling that because the victims were UDAs, the jury maybe wouldn't care, or maybe would give them like lesser included charges or something, but we, no, sent a clear message with that. You know, I almost went to trial on Felix Mendez. I was in the second day of trial, and he's the, the 16-year-old who killed Wanda Sutowski on her 65th birthday at Mustang Corners, and he pled out the second day of trial to life with the possibility of release after 25 years. He was always going to be eligible for that because he was 16 at the time, and you can't send a 16-year-old away for natural life, so says the Supreme Court of the United States. And then just some other cases, Mr. Medina, we had him on one case where he confessed after he was involved in another case, and so he got a lighter sentence because there was a concurrent federal prosecution, and it was really more their case. Alana Tucker got 16 years plus probation tail. Eric DeLees, he's the one set for trial in May, again, significant litigation expenses were, you know. The nice thing is since COVID, the judges are, and hopefully the courts are going to uphold this, but doctors are appearing by Zoom pretty routinely now, whereas we used to not be able to do that because of the.
Couldn't get them in.
Well, because of the confrontation clause, they had to appear in person. Doctors do not want to appear in person, and so that was always a struggle, but they're more, it's easier with them being allowed to appear by Zoom.
Much less expensive.
Much less expensive. Yeah. And then Mr. Guzman, 15 years. Mr. Campbell, 19.5 years. He wasn't even fleeing. He was the guy on Ghost Town Trail who was just driving like really fast with UDAs in his car, flipped his vehicle, killed one of the UDAs, and he denied everything. They got into his phone, and there he was, taking a video of the dead woman and sending it to the smugglers, to the cartels.
UDA, I'm sorry, stands for undocumented.
Anyway. The cargo, if you will, the people that are being smuggled. Yeah. So, you know, this is, at one point, we had almost, no, we had every attorney on the felony unit had a murder case related to human smuggling going on at the same time. And I mean, that's significant for this county. I mean, I got here in 2009. We normally have one to two homicide cases a year come in, maybe four max, and.
What makes it murder?
What makes it murder? Well, the first-degree murder charge is based on the felony murder statute, which is fleeing. Your felony flight is one of the qualifying underlying statutes that if you kill somebody in furtherance or in direct fight of what you're doing, then it's a first-degree murder charge that carries, it can be natural life, that's what William Brown got, or it can be 25 to life, that's what Felix Mendez got. And then also, it can just be like with Mr. Campbell's case, Keyston Campbell, he wasn't fleeing, but we discharged him with second-degree murder, which is like wanton disregard. There's like a extreme reckless second-degree murder, and that was the theory that he was charged under. Because the speeds, obviously, for many of these chases are over 100 miles an hour.
Was this Campbell guy high?
No.
He's just real stupid.
Yeah, and he, and he, and he's illustrative of the problem that we had. He flew here from Seattle, Washington, just to make money in our county. He, I think in the phone, it was that he had done a load the day before, got him safely up to Phoenix, was coming back to double his money, make more money, and then he was avoiding, the checkpoint had reopened, he was avoiding that checkpoint over by like Sonizona, and so went on Ghost Town Trail, and.
Been there many times.
Well, you know, I went out there with the officers, and when you get onto that dirt, that was my case, too.
Yeah.
When you get onto that dirt part of the road, I mean, there's five signs in a row, beware, road is dangerous, you know, and so I went there, I took photographs of every single sign, because that goes to his knowingly disregarding.
Neglecting.
Yeah.
The advisory.
Exactly.
I just remember fishtailing out there on my pickup truck. I'm really careful out there when I'm out there hunting, yeah.
So, so, yeah, like I said, we had two additional paralegals, well, they're now reclass to paralegals, working on all of these cases, and one moved out of state, so we just phased her position out, and the other one went to work for Kristana in diversion, and so we, we knew we were going to lose DEMA. We heard about a year ago we were losing DEMA.
So your paralegal is able to take a case all the way up to trial and then hand it off to an attorney?
No, 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 no. What our paralegals do is, we're, we do vertical prosecution in our office, and.
So you signed it to a lawyer early on?
And they keep it the whole way. So like, I took Keyston Campbell, I took Felix Mendez when the police called and said, we're sending over a 48-hour case, they're in custody. We have to charge that case within 48 hours based on the information we have, the probable cause statement. I personally, I was the chief criminal deputy at the time. I personally review it, I charge it, I file the complaint, I take it to grand jury or preliminary hearing, I take it all the way through trial. Dallas is my paralegal. She filed, if it's going to be a trial case like that and not early resolution court, she files that complaint for me. She does all of my disclosure for me throughout the case, and then she does all of the digital evidence, she makes all the redactions. She will sit with me during trial, and she, because everything in trial now is this. All the photos are up there, all the video, the body cam is up there. While I'm talking to the witness and talking to the jury, she's there making it all happen. And this is like what we were explaining to Sharon and Joe for the reclass, because these are not secretaries typing a Word document.
So how many paralegals do you have for a lawyer, just one?
Well, we have seven full-time felony attorneys, and we have, we used to have seven paralegals, but now we have five.
We have less than one, too.
We, yes.
So somebody shares.
So somebody shares, which is why we need this position that we're asking for. We're getting there.
So you have, you have seven altogether, is that seven criminal?
Well, right, no, no, in, in the felony criminal unit, okay?
You have seven.
We have seven. We have a chief criminal deputy who is also a line attorney.
Then we got on the civil side.
And then we have, well, let me finish. Then we have three in the drug unit and three in the general crime unit. So that's the felony unit.
That's all together.
And then we have a juvenile prosecutor and three misdemeanor prosecutors that cover the JP courts. And then the juvenile prosecutor covers the juvenile division, which is Terry Judge Bannon. And then in the civil, we have Paul, the chief civil, and then three civil deputies under him.
So you got four on the civil side, and one more time on the criminal side?
Yes, 11.
11, okay.
Yeah, but the misdemeanor unit is totally separate, and they do a whole, a totally separate thing.
They're still prosecutor, you're still a lawyer.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're lawyers, they're prosecutors, they're under me, but they just work, the misdemeanor attorneys work exclusively in the justice court, except that we did have them pitch in on the DEMA grant to charge these cases, because there was one morning in November 2023, on a Monday, we came in and we had 18 felony flight smuggling cases just from over the weekend. So we.
I get you. What, 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 just, I'm throwing crazy stuff out there. So what if, you know, you hired more paralegals and took away one attorney?
Well, we have another, another attorney position, and the position was.
So they're doing all the work and putting all your things together. We kind of already did that.
We just did that.
Right, right, so that's what I'm saying. So it sounds like, you know, that's where the meat and potatoes are.
Right. We, we used to have eight felony attorneys, and we basically had to leave one unfunded because last year we had a lot of attorneys leave our office for better-paying jobs, and so we had to give our.
Take away two attorneys, hire more paralegals and raise everybody else.
The problem is this, as great as the paralegals are, there's something unique and special about being an attorney, because we cover so many courts. There are six law and motion coverages every week. There's ERC every week, there's grand jury every week, there's the probation calendar every week, and there's all the justice of the peace coverages, and there's all of the juvenile coverage.
Why are you covering justice of the peace? Why isn't that?
Wait, let me finish.
All right. Because you don't need a lawyer to do JP.
Yes, you do. In order to go into court and represent the state, you have to have a bar license, you have to have an attorney. So the paralegal can't go in there and cover the law and motion calendar. You, having like that golden ticket, if you will, the bar license is super significant just to cover all of the court. The justice of the peace doesn't have to be a lawyer. The lawyer that appears in front of the justice of the peace has to have a bar license. So that's why. I mean, I agree that the paralegals do a great job, but I can't say Dallas, everybody's out sick, go down and cover law and motion. Yeah, but we did go down a lawyer for now because we had to, we had to get recruitment and retention when we had that mass exodus last year for higher jobs, higher-paying jobs.
I think you just said a few minutes ago, 110,000 did not get a seasoned attorney.
Correct, it can't. It's the same thing that we just had with the civil division. The civil division had an opening funded at $110,000 a year for two years. They had a headhunter. How many, how much money did we spend on those headhunters?
Several thousand.
I, I just had this discussion literally Saturday with Judge Thorne. In service at the West End, because I told him that. I said, how do we get lawyers in Cochise County? We can't find lawyers to come out to Cochise County. I got to go to Pima County, find lawyers, I got to go to Mirco County, I can't find lawyers in Cochise County.
We, we could not fund that position. We hired the new guy, Bert, have you met him?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Paul brought him by.
Okay, that, that position was, you, the board gave it to us at 110,000. We could only get him at 125. We had to use the salary savings from the position in the felony unit that we went down. That's how we hired Bert. It's the only way we were able to hire this. That position was empty for two years.
That was criminal or civil?
That was civil, but we took the money from salary savings from a criminal position to bring him in because we needed to hire that position.
Is that Dylan?
No, this is Bert.
The new guy that just came in that Cray brought by just, was it Monday?
He's a, he's a little bit older than me, he's a, like, his family's from Bisbee, Bert Whitehead the fourth.
I haven't seen.
He just started.
Yeah.
He's a seasoned lawyer.
At least, at least 125,000 to get a seasoned attorney.
At least, yes, and he had a strong desire to move back to the area, and yes.
So he's.
So you got lucky.
Scraping.
We got very lucky.
He's scraping because he wants to move back.
Yes, the, the market in, all across the state for attorneys skyrocketed in the last several years, and you know, like, we all love living here, okay? But it's hard to attract attorneys to come to Cochise County, and I told the Supreme Court this because I had dinner with them because of my husband. And the problem we have in recruitment is this, young people don't want to move here because there's not a big nightlife, okay? There's not Ubers everywhere. I mean, there's some, but sometimes you go to a bar in an Uber and you can't get home in an Uber because they all, they went to bed. Middle, middle-aged people don't want to move here because of the education system. Like, Socia Roscoe, she was the head of Ola for many years, great attorney, great department head. She moved to Pima because of her daughter's IEP. They couldn't do it in Bisbee. And then with older folks, it's the constant doctor's appointments and the lack.
Or Mayo Clinic or whatever, yes.
So, you know, when you're dealing with somebody with a law degree who can now, since COVID, just appear by Zoom in their house in Scottsdale or Mesa or whatever, getting them to come down here is very hard. And we, so we did offer, you know, part remote, and we were able to get one of our attorneys to come back from the AG's office, Raymond Haight, and he's actually going to move back down here, but he's been coming down one day a week and being remote with PBK for the last seven months.
As a criminal lawyer?
Yes, in the drug unit.
What's the repercussions of not taking on the cases and just maybe.
Public safety?
Sternly. No, no, I got you, but sternly, sternly, you know.
Turn into San Francisco.
Yeah, I got, I got you. That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a gauge on this, though, right? So you're, I just, we just had this discussion with the sheriff, right? So we're, we're in a county with a stagnant population, an aging population, our tax revenue is flat, we're not seeing any, any growth, but inflation is going up. You're, you're talking about salaries, everything. So everything is going up except our revenue. Our revenue is just staying right, right here. So this is the, this is the problem, you know, and we, we're already the fifth highest taxed county in the state. You know, there's only, I mean, the prop, we're in the top three in sales tax, you know, top five in property tax. I mean, so we're, we're, we're in this conundrum here where we're not going to run to the taxpayers and get more tax dollars, but then we got to find a way to deliver services, and we're just trying to struggle with.
I know.
I'm trying to get an idea of the pros and cons of everything, every option available to us.
And you know, our drug unit is, HIDA covers 70% of one attorney. They say they cover an attorney, they don't. I fight with them, I want to get a raise for that attorney out of HIDA, but general fund picks up the rest. Burn covers 1.4, 1.4, okay? So the county, as far as the whole drug unit goes, 30% of one attorney, 40% of another attorney comes out of the general fund, and the rest are, are grants. The, the general crime side is mostly all general fund, and those are mostly your victim cases, and your felony flights, and your DUIs, your public safety cases, okay? We, we can't cut that, because you will have victims calling you, calling you. Why is my case not being taken seriously? The county attorney said there's too short staff to prosecute my property crime case. You know, if you let property crimes go, you let quality of life go. But we are going to talk to you, Kristana's going to talk to you about some of the cost-saving measures that she's done, especially with her alternative prosecution program and mental health and drugs. So let me, maybe that's a good time to turn it over. So let me, maybe that's a good time to turn it over. All this is like, we show this to people. Yeah. Of course, you know about the fentanyl and you heard from the sheriff today. So let me turn it over to Kristana and we'll tell you some of the things that we've been doing to try to have cost-saving measures.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you. Um, I just wanted, it's a new board, so hi. I wanted to go back and sort of revisit with Graces and why it came about, so.
And this is, do you remember, I, I was watching your meeting this morning when Commander Bradshaw was talking about the Rule elevens? And when you take somebody to ASH and it's a hundred thousand dollars, and when you take somebody to Pima County and it's forty-three thousand dollars. Well, all those costs got shifted to our budget and she came, we came up with Grace and she's been the head of it. And this is how we've tried to deal with all those huge expenses.
Right. Sorry. No, thank you. Um, so with the Rule eleven process, it's really expensive. Back in the day when we were sending people to Pima County, it was forty thousand dollars to restore somebody just so that we could put, you know, put them in trial and prosecute them. Um, so we worked with partnering agencies, law enforcement, public health, community organizations. And so if you look at this, in the beginning, when we began, we were going to, it was going to cost us half a million dollars to basically restore people just so that you could put them on trial. Um, and then we developed Grace, which is a program that specifically deals with people with mental health issues. And what we came up with was this, what we already know, that they, most of these people had insurance outside of the county, but when you're in jail, it doesn't count. So what we were doing is, uh, we'd get the case suspended, we send them over to whatever mental health, um, facility would take them at the time.
So Medicare doesn't pay when you're in jail? Is that the deal?
Not to restore for Rule eleven, no. So.
So they won't let you get the mentally competent on tax, on tax dollars?
We have to pay for the evaluations, we have to pay for the restoration, we pay for all of that. And I think she's going to explain the blip, but go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, we do have that. And then we saw an immediate decrease the very next year. Because what we're doing, like I said, is we're sending them places. Now, I'm not saying that we're, we're over at ninety percent with Grace specifically, and then I'm going to talk about diversion programs a little bit later. But what we're seeing is a connection to services. And even when these people fail, and obviously failure is not a good thing, we're still saving the county money. Because what happens is they've been out, they've been on meds, so when they come back, they can work with their defense attorney in their own defense. And so we're saving the county money both ways. I'm, I'm sorry.
Didn't you say when such and such a person?
So how I define, um, success in the Grace program is that somebody, once they're done with Grace, they don't come back to the court system for at least a year, okay? That's a pretty good stat nationwide, but that is something that's really important.
So you dismiss their case?
We suspend it while they're in.
Suspend it and then when they meet the conditions, then you drop the case? So they're, I was going to say, otherwise, why would you want to get?
Right.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, because you're just going to go right back to jail.
It's almost like a private Title Thirty-six, like court order treatment where, where this is a person that hasn't been Title Thirty-six, or maybe they have. But we're saying that they normally have an SMI diagnosis, they're seriously mentally ill. We get, she gets them connected to services, they stay on their treatment program, they don't get in trouble for a certain period of time, and then they can get their case dismissed. Now, the blip you're going to see is because we don't put first-degree murderers in Grace.
Right.
So we have to restore first-degree murders and endure the cost that Commander Bradshaw was talking about with the forty thousand dollars a month, the hundred thousand dollars to go to ASH, and so we had.
So like that guy that just killed the guy over in Pierce, right? Was he mentally competent?
Well, I'm sure that's probably going to go Rule eleven, but like, for instance, that twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, it's the desert RV shooter.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right? And he, um.
He was definitely a little hot.
Well, he was, he had a doctor that said he was guilty except insane. We had a doctor that said he wasn't. So it was like the battle of the doctors. He ended up pleading to life, but, um, you know.
Guilty but insane. What does that mean?
Guilty except insane. It means that you, um, due to mental illness that's not from drugs or alcohol, cannot appreciate, uh, right from wrong.
So you can't prosecute him? Is that what that means?
Well, they can, they can be found guilty except insane, which means they go to the state hospital and then they're under the psychiatric review board.
Until they get competent, then they got them to go to prison?
You would think that because that's what the statute reads, but actually they let them out into the community. So we don't just say, okay, your doctor says guilty except insane. We find a doctor that, if, if our doctor agrees, then hey, they're guilty except insane. And they'll go to state hospital and then we have to fight every couple of years to keep them there. And then, but if we have a doctor that says they're not guilty except insane for these reasons, then we'll litigate it. And then you're dealing with the cost of these doctors, but this is normally when we're, this is like the murder cases.
So you have to pay for them as professional witnesses for the prosecution? So what do they cost?
Well, okay, so there's two phases.
Two hundred bucks an hour? They get paid for travel. Well, I'm sure they get paid for travel, but what, what, what's the going hourly rate for an expert medical witness?
It's usually, depending on their, um, expertise, um, credentials, it can be anywhere from four hundred an hour to six, eight hundred an hour. It just depends.
Yeah, so there's two phases. There's the Rule eleven restoration to competency, that gets them restored to sit for trial. And then the trial is, were they guilty except insane at the time they killed the person? It's two phases and we pay for all of it. So we don't want to go through all of this necessarily for a car burglary.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
So that's why we have her and this is her program.
Got you.
So that when you're seeing the higher years, what you're seeing in the kind of cases that Lori's talking about, uh, community safety is an incredibly important thing to her, to us. So we don't take border crime cases, we don't take DUIs, um, people with significant criminal history and of course murder. Um, we look at that, we do decline people based on their criminal history because, I mean, I live in this community too. And I think reasonably, if I thought somebody would hurt my child, how would I feel about that? And a lot of times I frame it that way. Would I be okay with this person being next to me? Most of the time, not really, but it's a reasonable, you know, it's reasonable to take them and save money. But from the time that we started Grace till now, we have an estimated five million dollars savings. And where that comes from is if you take all the people who have been through the Grace program and you take how much it would have, uh, cost to restore them just so that they could go to trial. Um, it would equate to about five million dollars. Now, I'm, I'm not fluffing that with, there's a lot of other things that we could, we could put in, how much it cost to pay the prosecutors, the cops, the jail, all of those things. We are talking about just the cost it would take to restore them is five million dollars.
Yeah, the hundred K or the forty K or whatever.
The big-ticket things that Commander Bradshaw's talking about.
Um, so we do have a few different kind of programs. So we do put Grace in to alternative to prosecution, but it's not a diversion program. I just wanted to explain that. And we have a traditional diversion program, which has been going on, I mean, as long as I know Bernie was there for about fifteen years. Um, we just, we got a grant from ACJC, um, not too long ago for half a million dollars. And what we did is we revamped the programs that we had and we also offered, we also added traffic diversion and petty.
So how do you plead insanity on traffic diversion?
You don't. I mean.
No, but that's what this is, right? That's what this program is.
No, no. Okay, we, we, we talked about Grace and then we kind of finished it and then now she's talking about traditional diversion.
Okay, 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 okay.
But, but we do have mentally ill folks in misdemeanor land and a lot of times we can put them in care court, which is a JP five specific program. Judge Kerfman runs, that was started by Judge Dickerson, or we do misdemeanor Grace.
We do.
And that's for like the really seriously mentally ill people that just won't stop going to the one circle K.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Walking around naked.
Yeah. But, but now she's segueing into her specific diversion program. So, so Grace saves us money. We don't charge those folks any fees.
So diversion is, is depending on what the issues, right? So traffic diversion is what? You go to traffic school?
That's mostly the, the truckers from AP four and six that get busted at from ADOT.
For, for what? Overdriving their hours?
Yes. And so then they have their lawyers and they pay money to the county to go into a diversion.
But, but what is it though? That's what I'm getting at. What is the diversion? Do you force them to sit in a rest stop for six?
Wow. Okay, good. So, yeah, so depends on, I'll only go back for a second. It depends on what kind of diversion you have. So if we're talking traffic specifically, um, everybody who goes into traffic diversion has to pay the seventy dollar a month fee. Depending on what crime they committed, we make them take a corresponding class to that. The same thing that would, you know.
But it's a criminal traffic, right? So it's like driving ninety and.
Yes, because the state doesn't get involved in simple traffic.
Right, 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 because that's civil.
Right. So we, we don't, we do not represent the state on civil.
Right, right. So you're, you're talking about a guy driving ninety to forty-five, reckless aid or reckless driving.
You don't put DUIs in diversion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so what is the diversion for those guys? Like, do you go to traffic school?
Yes, we make them take a series of classes. They pay the seventy dollars a month. They have to make a hundred dollar donation to a local Cochise County nonprofit. And they have to be in the.
Can you do that?
Yes.
You coerce a donation?
Here's the thing, in general, we would make them do community service. You broke the fiber here in Cochise County. What good is it do me to have you do community service in Atlanta? This is our county. These are our people.
So you give them a choice. You could physically stay here and enjoy the Cochise County weather, or you could pay a donation.
Yes, if it's ten hours of community.
And that stood up in court?
Nobody's telling you, yeah.
Diversion follows the AIPAC guidelines. Now, Kristana and myself were on the AIPAC diversion working group that devised the guidelines.
Yes.
Okay, that's convenient.
Yeah. So we, we say any nonprofit that, that impacts Cochise County. So.
So you have to have, you have a list?
We don't do a list because if you do a list, it's basically suggesting we're endorsing.
Oh, okay, okay. Then you're crossing the line.
That's right. We say anyone. So they'll call and they'll go, is this one okay? And I'm like, is it a Cochise County one? It's fine. Now, we do have like a couple of gray area ones, like the Ronald McDonald Fund, not technically Cochise County, but it does help people in Cochise County. So we do make that exception. But in general, if, if the money isn't staying here in Cochise County, we don't accept it. Even if they've done it, they have to make another donation. They get very upset, but we're very clear on what they're supposed to do. So.
And it's a choice in the end. In the end, they get the choice.
It is choice. Yeah, if you don't want it on your record, you want to keep driving a rig, then you'll go ahead and do what you're supposed to. So, um, when we look at this, we got the half a million dollar grant, it lasted for three years, it ends next year. Now, in speaking in that, obviously, we don't want to have to come to you guys next year and ask for money to, um, pay for the two programs or the two people who are already in the program. So what we're doing, um, what we do with that yearly revenue is we're starting to, um, we're going to use that money to pay for the, the positions that already exist.
Right. See, the general fund was sweeping the money because our diversion coordinator in the past was paid through the general fund. But now the general fund doesn't pay for her unit. It's her, Monica McCall, who's our drug, former probation officer, who's our drug diversion coordinator. And then one of her administrative assistants, one of the gals that used to be a, a legal secretary on border crime, now works for her. And so, um, I think we're, you're not going to sweep the money anymore. You're not supposed to be sweeping the money.
We have budget to sweep the money, but that's all subject to board approval.
Yes, but, but that, as you'll see, um, then, then we can not ask the general fund for this money. And under the law, the statute, the money's collected must go to a diversion program. So you can't legally use it for anything else.
Right. So we started in twenty twenty-two, which is pre, predates me. Um, they brought in six thousand dollars, a little over six thousand dollars that year. Um, I took it over in twenty twenty-three. We started with, um, increasing sixty-four thousand dollars. Last year, we made two hundred seventeen thousand. This year, just our first quarter, we're at seventy-five thousand. And our projected by the end of the year is three hundred and three, which, um, ultimately covers the positions that we do have. Um, including some other things that are also diversion related, because again, we can't use that money for anything that is not diversion related.
So we pay for testing kits for drug diversion, um.
We send people to, um, the actual, like, one of the hospitals to get paid. We pay for that because we want it to be an independent test. We want to make sure if somebody is in drug diversion, which is one of our new revamped program that Monica runs. Um, we want to make sure these people are clean, right? I don't want to just call you and say, oh, hey, are you okay? No, we want to know that they're clean. We go out and we visit them. We do inspections. We are making sure that they are adhering to the program guidelines. So that when they're done, we can say, hey, listen, we've done what we can to, um, ensure their success. Monica's graduated twenty people. Uh, the program usually lasts a year, a year and a half.
Let me just stop. So Monica's program is the new drug diversion program. And we just had our first ceremony for graduation with Judge Lindstrom in January. It was our second. And, um, it's amazing program. We went up to Yabapai, saw the way they did it up there. We said, no, we don't want to contract with some private agency to do this. We're going to do it in-house. And we are doing it pre-indictment. So when our attorneys are reviewing cases on simple possession cases for like low-level offenders, people who have not, you know, they haven't been an addict for years and years and years, they don't have a huge criminal history, but they're like dabbling in drugs or, you know, whatever. Then they say, you know what? We're not even going to file the felony complaint. We're not even going to indict this person. We're going to send them a letter saying, we've reviewed your police report, we have probable cause to indict you. Would you like to get treatment and enter our program instead? And then this way it really gives them a fighting.
How long can you hold that indictment over their head?
Seven years, statute of limitations.
Is it seven years?
Yeah, the statute of limitations. So, yes, so that's the real innovative thing is if they, there's a huge incentive to not ever have that indictment because that indictment is on your record, which you're going to see when we talk about disposition reporting.
So according to National Institute of Justice, um, anytime we have somebody in a diversion program, just in general, it saves the county three to thirteen thousand dollars, depending on the case. So we're saving money, we're making money. I think it's a healthy thing, uh, for the county. It also reduces, uh, incarceration con, uh, cost, um, shorter processing for cases. And honestly, it, it saves the cost of prosecution, rearrest, treatment. But what we're doing is, I really feel like we're also clearing up the docket for prosecutors to handle more serious cases. Because if, if it's in diversion, it's not a particularly serious case. Now, we do have people who have done serious things. And again, that's case by case and we look at community safety, but.
We don't put sales cases in diversion.
Yeah, so. Okay, um, so that's just where you guys can find that we have to use the money for a diversion program to see how that. And, um, just measurable outcomes, we have a reduction in traditional prosecuted cases and we are consistently above eighty percent. Um, I have to do, I have to wait one more quarter before I can give you exact numbers. But we've had over a thousand cases diverted and we do that annually so far. But again, we're reducing court time, legal fees, incarceration costs, and honestly, we're freeing up the prosecutors.
A lot of that number comes from the misdemeanor cases, yeah.
So what, what about the fines that generally would go with, you know, getting a prosecution and getting a conviction and there's a fine associated with that? And that's mostly goes to the state, to the court system. Does that need to come to you?
That doesn't, but when they suspend the case, it's my understanding that they're not going to be responsible for those fines that go.
No, they're not. That's what I'm getting at. So as a revenue source I'm talking about, so when you convict somebody and they pay a fine, state Supreme Court gets a chunk of that. Some goes to the.
We get the CJF money.
We get, it gets distributed to like fill the gap and, and CJF money. And, but it.
When they're not, but what I'm getting at though, when they're not convicted because you diverted them, they don't pay the fine, right?
That's correct.
So that money does not go into the system. So is there a revenue source other than coercing them to give to a charity? To, to get revenue to offset your cost?
That was the last slide that she has. She, we're projected to bring in, in revenue, three hundred thousand dollars in diversion fees.
So, okay.
The diversion fees get paid to our county. They don't get.
But that's what I'm asking. But where does that number come from? Where, who sets that amount?
So, um, actually, AIPAC has a guideline that says you guys have to, uh, charge everybody basically the same amount. Some counties are charging five hundred dollars. That's not a reasonable fee. Seventy dollars for us seems like a reasonable fee given where we're at.
A month.
A month for the time that they're in the program. So that's what we went with because it's, it's enough to kind of make a point, like when you hear people in the pocket, they pay.
It looks like the average state what?
So Apache County charges fifteen hundred dollars upfront, what I'm seeing in.
Holy cow.
Right, right. It's nuts. Nobody, that's my whole thing.
This project, this two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars last year, let's say, that we know was collected. That's diversion fees that are collected that come to the county that don't get filtered through the state.
Right, right, right. I, I got you.
The average is significantly higher than ours.
So again, this is like the discussion I had with the CCOM lady, right? There, there's a market point that is, let's just say, that, um, I'm trying to find the, 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 the point of, the threshold is, it's painful, but not to the point where it's prohibitive.
And, and we feel like for our population.
You came up with seventy.
Yeah.
But I'm getting, but I'm getting, is that?
Could we charge more?
Is it, is it in the middle compared to the other counties? Is it at the low end compared to other counties?
But if you'll allow me, what I'll do is I'll go back and I'll research and I'll get an average and I'll shoot you an email that.
I'm just curious to know, because if, if there's, if there's an average where every other county's charging a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty-five dollars and you're charging seventy.
I mean, I can tell you that, um, most of the defense attorneys, because a lot of them are court-appointed on these cases. They try to get us to reduce the seventy, claiming other people can't afford it.
What's the, the default rate on that?
So if somebody says that they're, they can't afford it, we usually go by half. We will go, we'll charge them thirty-five dollars a month.
What do you use to set that? The I can't afford it factor. How do you, how do you?
We make them fill out a financial affidavit.
And what's the number, the threshold for that, do you know?
So we go by, um, income guidelines.
So poverty level?
Yep.
Single, which is what, what, twenty or eighteen thousand dollars or less?
I don't want to misquote it. I don't want to misquote it.
I can't remember exactly either. But I mean, that's, so what you're going to do, a single unmarried poverty level is X. So if it's below that, you're willing to.
You know, when Judge Lindstrom came back to our office in 2014.
Can you means test it?
I'm just going to give you an example of why we like the 70, but we, I mean, we.
No, but for example, if you means test it, say, somebody that makes 350K versus somebody that makes 18K.
AIPAC guidelines say that you can't do.
You can't.
You have mean test.
Now, because.
Who put those guidelines out?
AIPAC.
Who the hell are they? No, I'm not, they're not the legislature.
No, but the legislature in that statute that we just funded gave them the authority to do it.
What AIPAC stands for?
Arizona Prosecute Attorney Advisory Council.
Another non-governmental agency that's been given authority to.
But when we used to have this program where we would divert the marijuana load cases when that was a big problem in 2014, we had a diversion program. This was Judge Lindstrom's idea when he came back to our office as a prosecutor and diversion coordinator, that he was going to charge these load drivers like 250 a month, and because they're engaging in the cartel. And so they're buying their way out of this felony conviction for marijuana transportation. And, you know, it was basically just a way for the cartel to buy their way out of this conviction. The people, the recidivism rate was super high. It, I know that, now Judge Lindstrom, but Jason at the time, he was very disillusioned by it. And we, and then we got audited.
And we got audited, and we had to shut the program.
We got audited, and we had to shut the program down by the auditor general.
Oh, okay. Because we did a fee schedule.
Yes. So we, this is why we don't.
So what stops you from charging $250 and then say, well, this guy's below the poverty level, so we're only going to charge him $70? So you can't, you're going to get in trouble with doing that?
Yes. So we were very leery of tinkering with the.
Can you give me the statute for that, where it gave them the authority to set?
So ARS 11-362 and through 11-363, she could do the information you're looking for.
362 through.
363 also.
No, 362 and 363.
361, 11-361, 362, 363. That's all the diversion sector.
I think, or supervisors should set the. And I will talk to Mr. Dallas.
I'm okay if you guys can find us a way to make.
If you wouldn't change it, go ahead.
I think, I think it should be means tested. And I, you know, I don't, because you don't want people that are in poverty getting paid a ridiculous fine because they're not going to pay.
Well, loans are means tested. Why couldn't diversion fees?
Right, right, right.
No, I mean, we're all for it. We'll do whatever the legislature tells us to.
Yeah, they should change that to get it away from an unelected, non-governmental board and put it in the hands of the. We the people. We the people, right?
Bring that up at the next legislative policy call.
Yeah, yeah. So diversion. TBOs. Gotcha. Okay, see, this is very good.
Well, the problem you might have though is that so many people that come through our system, if it was means tested, would be paying less than 70.
Yeah.
No, you started that. You set that number and then.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
No, you've been very helpful.
Thank you.
All right, Dallas, we're moving on to our actual funding request, which is the ADRS Legal Secretary 2, which is, it's a little bit more than a data entry position because of everything that's involved with it. But it's a little less, if you will, than a trial paralegal. So go ahead, Dallas.
So, hello, I am, my title is Technology Project Manager. But lumped in of all of that, I am the supervisor for our paralegals and a couple of the legal secretaries in the county attorney's office right now. And this ask is for one more position on my team to kind of alleviate the burden that ADRS has become for us. ADRS is the Arizona Disposition Reporting System. All of those big words to say, this is the defendant's criminal history. If you get arrested, the disposition reporting system is what tracks that arrest through disposition, through the end of its prosecution. In 2020, we, our office, county attorneys, received $150,000 in an ADRS grant to purchase our case management system. It is a phenomenal system. It has streamlined so much of the work for our staff, for the attorneys, for our victim services. It's been phenomenal, and it grows and it gets better every year. And we got it just in time to handle that huge spike in border-related cases. And I truly believe without this carpal system, we would be in a world hurt. Most of the counties in our office, in Arizona rather, along with the Defense Bar, they use Prosecutor by Carpel. That's the city prosecutors, that's county prosecutors, all over the state.
Our defense offices use.
Our defense offices.
DDK.
They're called Defender by.
Defense by Carpel, not Prosecutor by Carpel. But the agreement for that grant was that we would be able to update dispositions in real time. So our attorneys would make a charging decision on an arrest, and we would be able to update their criminal history to show what charges are actually pending. I think we've talked about this a little bit. We went from seven felony legal secretaries down to five. And each of our current felony secretaries, all five of us, seven historically, have between 150 and 250 felony cases. Depends on the type of case that they have. We have some secretaries that are only handling early resolution court cases. Those are a little bit less involved. And then there are a number of us that handle indicted cases and trial cases that take a lot more time and a lot more work. And in addition to all of the work that we already have, that we do on a regular basis, we're adding this requirement that we have to comply with ADRS and their reporting. And we have a way to electronically send dispositions through an interface. That interface is only 40% effective. And that number is not coming from our active interface because our goal line was Monday, and it's already becoming a problem. I use that 40% because I have had conversations with the few counties that are actively engaged in this interface. And it is only about 40% effective for them, and they have staff specific to update the things that the interface cannot. So for example, if I have a defendant and he was booked on a theft issue that happened two days ago, but after investigation, we realized it actually happened the week prior, our interface will not allow us to make that date change. We have to manually log into the website and make that change manually. It can't be sent through an interface. That is, sounds simple, but it takes my staff so much more time to stop what they're doing, realize there's an issue, figure out the issue, and then fix it manually on the website. This is something that we.
You're saying the interface with PDK and the state website didn't seem enough?
It is, no. And there is, at this point, there is no way to make it seamless. This is the statute that governs the do we have to. Because I don't have a VAR license, I'm going to let Lori explain this one.
Well, yes, because, you know, when I was talking about this with Dallas, and it's just like, I mean, what's, what happens to us if we don't do this? So this is the statute that makes it mandatory for us. On top of the fact that we did, the grant we got for PDK was literally called the ADRS grant because the purpose of it was to make it easier for us to do this. So in order to ensure complete and accurate criminal history, record information is maintained and disseminated by the central state repository. And then you can see it's in every criminal case. And when, well, I'll let you read it to yourself. This information shall be submitted on a form or in a manner required by the department. And again, submitted in a form or in a manner specified by rules approved by the Supreme Court. The manner required slash specified is now ADRS electronic reporting. That's the manner that they have required and specified. And failing to comply may result in loss of access and other consequences. And that's loss of access to ACGS. And you know what ACGS is? It's a criminal history database that the Department of Public Safety runs, that we have to have special licenses and special trainings and a special secure room to enter. And then it also gives us access through that to the national database, correct?
So why does it have to be in a secure room?
Because you have to be certified to be able to access it. You cannot walk into my office.
So like if a cop's in his police car, can he look it up from his police?
He can look it up from his police car, but for instance, if he does, then somebody does a public records request for his body cam, we have to sit there, or Sierra Vista PD, or sheriff's office has to redact that information from the body cam.
Okay, so it's just personal, private information of the criminal that you're protecting?
Yeah, it's a felony to access it for an improper purpose or without a license.
Okay.
It's like super top secret.
So the people putting the data in there.
Yes.
Have to be certified and.
Background checked, certified, trained, recertified. Yes, we have it in a locked room.
And we get a site audit every two years with the CEGS coming out or checking.
And this is for, to protect their, somebody artificially going in and creating a criminal history?
Sure, the integrity of the database.
Or deleting it.
Yes, the integrity of the database. I mean, it's, you know, it's really important whether or not you have your case entered into the system, whether or not it's accurate.
Okay.
It affects your entire, like, criminal history. Every case that we charge as a felony, we run a criminal history on.
What about, you know, you see the cops writing in on the computer in their cars, all these notes and all that stuff that goes in there on people and stuff? You know, like if you, if you, I'll give you an example. I watched Fridays with Frank, the Canal County Sheriff's Department guy, right? He goes on his little computer, he pulls somebody over, he goes, oh, look at this. I pulled over this guy on March 28th. I pulled this guy over on June 15th. I pulled this guy. He's got all that built in. That's not in this system, right?
No, I mean, normally, like, our police officers, what they're generally looking at is spillman. You know their spillman system?
Okay.
So that's probably what they're looking at during a traffic stop.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. So this, what I'm getting at though, it's data collection.
Which is tied to the CGS database.
Okay.
All right, there's a lot of data collection going on here. So I'm just trying to understand what all's.
And it's, so the ADRS system, a penalty of not having it is that you don't have access to this other system, the CJF.
I mean, that could be one of the penalties that they give to us, yes.
And is PDK, there another system besides PDK that does do a seamless?
They're not bringing the both.
I know. I'm just trying to figure out where the root of the problem is.
So let me see if this might answer some of your questions.
And at this point, the whole state is all in on PDK because we have, also with PDK, we have a system now to share criminal history. So I can click on a button in PDK, and it can tell me this guy's pending case in Yabapai County. So the whole state went all in on PDK. There's no switching on PDK.
So this is, I think, my most basic slide that I could articulate why it's important that the criminal histories are updated and why our piece of the puzzle is so important. There are three different steps to updating ADRS, which is somebody's criminal history. You have the initial arrest. Joe defendant gets arrested on theft. And that arrest comes to our office, and our attorneys make a charging decision. At that moment, it just shows that Joe defendant was arrested for theft. Our attorneys look at it and say, oh, well, there's criminal damage involved. There's, you know, burglary and theft. We're going to add a couple more charges. So we need to update his criminal history to reflect all three of those charges. So when he has another police encounter, or if he tries to purchase a firearm, or if he's looking to get a fingerprint clearance to work at one of our schools, his criminal history is accurate, and it shows that he's been, he's got pending charges more than just the original arrest.
Or it shows if we declined it. So one of the huge problems is somebody gets arrested on theft or prohibited possession or something like that, and it comes in. It gets entered into ADRS, right?
At the arrest.
And then we look at it, and we say, you know what? We're declining this case. Well, the decline has to go into ADRS, or it's going to say disposition not reported. And then that information's not going to be accurate when this person goes to purchase a firearm. Or get a security clearance.
Right, which is not fair to that person because they were never charged or convicted of that offense. It's just out there in limbo with no disposition. It's.
Very, very frequent.
Yes, it is very frequent. My staff, at least, I would, I would error say at least every couple of days, we will get a query from DPS, which is the digital reporting system. And they'll say, hey, we have an arrest in your county. This guy's applied to purchase a firearm. Can you tell me the result of this charge? And we'll say, yes, we prosecuted them with this, this, and this. They were sentenced on this day. You have to get the final disposition from the court. And that's the final piece of it. You have the arrest, you have what they were charged with, and then what they were convicted of comes from the court. And it's our middle piece that updates the criminal histories to make it most accurate. Because as we know, sometimes prosecution can take a while. And specifically for victim cases, if you have a defendant that is charged with a domestic violence crime, and it just shows there was an arrest, if that victim has another encounter, it's not going to be the same result as if it shows that he's actually pending charges because there was no conviction, there was no pending charges listed on that criminal history. It's just an initial arrest because it's not accurate. And like Lori said, the same thing with somebody that's arrested that we never charged. It's not fair to them to not have an updated criminal history because they were never charged with something. So our piece of the puzzle.
Do you expunge that when that happens? You take everything out of there after, if you decide not to charge and just leave it in there?
No. It just shows that the charges were.
It stays in there. The defendant sometimes will have to file a motion with the court to have it removed from the system, and that's can only be removed by court order. It would be like a crime for me to go in and remove it from the system.
Yeah. So someone like Duthetis, who's running, right? Or Gavro, he was charged, but never, I don't even think he was charged. He was in prison, right? And they didn't have a charge for him, and it took all the stuff. So that would be, this is something that helps.
Yes.
Because his story is quite incredible.
Yes. And I've heard his story, yes. He, he would benefit from an accurate ADRS disposition reporting.
One of, you know, even larger than that, I know that we've used a couple of different analogies, but if we've got somebody that is charged with a sex crime or a child abuse crime, and they're just arrested on ABC charge, and no disposition was reported, that terrifies me because if they want to work at a school, there's no conviction there. There's no update on their criminal history. Granted, ADRS will send us a query and say, hey, what happened with it? And they'll try and remedy it before they are given that fingerprint card or something like that. But our piece of the puzzle to make their criminal histories accurate is so important for so many different reasons. And that's why, that's why I need some help. My staff is so overworked. We have so many different pieces of the puzzle. They all are trying to learn so many more things related to digital evidence presentation in the courtroom. And having them have to sit there and click around to just do data entry is not a benefit of their time. Having somebody specific that is a legal secretary, not a paralegal, would be more beneficial and a better use of the time.
Yeah, but you still have to have the wherewithal to understand the statutes, to understand the system, to understand the importance of the security clearance and have the honesty of having access to the secure system and everything else. So that's why we thought that Legal Secretary 2 with a salary of $38,000 to $40,000 plus ERAs would be, that's what we could probably hire somebody with those qualifications for. So that's our ask.
What does public records come into all this? So you guys, you guys do that, right?
We do some public records requests, yes. The county attorney's office, yes, handles.
That's been a huge complaint, right, among a lot of people. And I mean, it's just all over the place. So where are you looking to deal with? And I mean, it's just all over the place. So where are you looking to deal with that? Because I gather since you don't have enough people to be able to do it, and there's lots of requests, right?
So, yes, the public records requests are handled by the Civil Division.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's a different.
It's, it's a different thing, yes.
Different budget?
Well, it's all the county attorney's budget.
But we're working on a new system.
So, so that new system is in place. They've been using it for three or four months now, and it has been helping with tracking the.
With tracking, but it's not helping with getting information.
Correct, you start to gather.
One of the things I'd like to look at, and once we get this budget stuff behind us and get some breathing room after June.
Yeah.
Is a public records index development of some kind, where we can start putting a lot of routine standard stuff into an index that people can go get on their own, you know, where you don't have to do all that. Where you guys come in is only the stuff that deals with criminal investigations or liability potential for the county, where you have to review that, or personal private information.
Sure.
You know, but other than that, I think we need, we need to have a separate public information person that can just get average stuff. But when it comes to the legal aspect, and that should come to you guys, to your civil division, to look over and make sure, okay, this is related to an ongoing criminal investigation. We don't want this out in the public. Or this is something that if we put this out there, it could open the county up to civil liability. Or this is my grandmother's deepest, darkest secret, and we don't want it to, to get out, or something like that. You know, that's what.
And I guess, you know, pardon my asking, but you know, when I look, like, say, the Morgan case, right, that, that's gotten a lot.
The phone record, the phone record.
So I'm just trying to figure out, because I'm kind of new to this specific thing, where that falls, where whose jurisdiction? That is the county attorneys or the?
That.
Don't need me.
That.
Where, where did that?
Judge Cardinal's cell phone log is a judicial public record.
It's going, it's going back and forth. And who's, who's, I don't think this is the place to discuss it, because it still is ongoing.
Litigation.
Litigation.
Let's not take that case, but I'm just trying to figure out where if somebody requests, you know, for public records, that goes to, depending on what the case is about, how much of it goes to you guys?
Yeah, all of it. So when a records request is made, whether it's through the system or through an email, it gets logged into the next request system, the county attorney's civil, that we have on our website. The Civil Division then sends out the task to impacted personnel who may have those records. And then we respond and we upload our documents to that.
And then some authorities got to go through every one of those. So if somebody wants to see.
It's got to read, read it.
Yeah, they want to see the emails for the last three months. They got to go through to make sure there's no.
Whether it just is purely requested, then they redact anything that's something else. That's not.
That's what I'm getting at. We, there, a lot of that stuff can be done by a non-attorney. That's what I'm getting at. That, if you, if you want to look at, because when I was in the legislature, all this stuff was done. We, we, not all of this went through the attorneys, right? So like when Mary Jill Pitzel, I'm sure she used to work for the Arizona Republic, when she asked for all of my emails with Arizona Public Safety or with, you know, some lobbyist or something like that, right, it would, it would go to the clerk of the senate, and she would go pull all my emails, and they would then look through all of that. And if there was their determination that they had a question, then they'd send it to the senate attorney for review. But ninety-nine percent of it, she would just deliver, right, as long, but she knew, she was trained to say, okay, any of this topic, any of this topic, any of this topic's got to go to the attorney. That's what I'm trying to get at. So when we look at this, there's a lot of stuff in there that they're just getting everything now. And it's overwhelming her civil division, because they got to look at every email, every, you know, and that's not necessary. So we should have a public information officer or a public records officer, or somebody along those lines that is trained, maybe by initially your people state, these are the topic areas that need a referral to an attorney for review, but everything else should be releasable to free up her team from having to look at every single little email. So the legislature, again, we, we had the clerk and her team would look at them all, and they knew what was releasable immediately without referral to an attorney, and then what needed to be reviewed to see whether or not it could be released would go to the senate attorney for review. So I mean, that's kind of something we need to work on later. But that, that's just to free up, so, and that's what's causing delays and taking a year to go through, is the backlog of that list that, you know, Joe's got in the, what are we up to now? I forgot the number was Terry, Tammy, Tammy.
Terry Joe.
Terry Joe, I get my Joes mixed up again, sent me one that she just did, and she's like, I'm number one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three, and they're on number sixty-four right now. That's, that's what we're talking about.
And some requests are faster to fill than others, so.
And that's another thing, yeah. So, so the, you know, but, but that's something we need to look at, and we'll ask you for help on that.
Sure.
It'd be like, like the state E access, they've got an E access portal that you can get into, and then maybe the county can have something.
I need to put as much stuff as we can, much stuff as we can online in a searchable format, right?
Right.
So that, that negates the need for public records.
That's the information that's asked that project, Joe's also.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. He's, he's doing that, so part of it. And then the next step is separating what I would say ministerial public records providing from legal stuff.
Right.
Right? And that's the next step. So we have to write that rule for somebody to get trained on. This is what you redact, this is what you don't redact, this is what you refer to the county attorney, this is what you can release to the public. You know, that needs to get done, and that should take some of the load off of the civil division, hopefully. And facilitate getting it out quicker so that the public can get their stuff faster.
And just an acronym, what is H, attorney, H I D T A?
HIDA, High Intensity Traffic Traffic area. That's a grant.
Like, see, you receive private grants. How many grants would you think you receive in proportion to your budget?
It, it balances itself again, depending on what, like when we got EMA, EMA's temporary, the A D R S grant is temporary. But functionally and ongoing, we have the Burn, the V O C A, the HIDA, those are the three that are, that are always present.
Yeah.
Do you guys see any reduction in these grants coming down?
HIDA fluctuates every year, but sometimes they'll, they'll give us, they'll give us amounts, thirty thousand dollars over what they gave us last year, but you can only spend it on certain things, and we don't want to raise somebody's salary one year and then drop it again, so we, we try to, you know, take that into consideration. But it's, it's pretty static with HIDA. And Burn, we, we've asked over the years for them to increase our Burn grant. Every year we ask for more and we get, they divide it amongst the eligible, some, uh, grantees. You know, in the state, we pretty much do the same thing every year.
But then we have issues with V O C A sometimes with the beds.
We don't know what we're getting in V O C A because it's on a federal cycle, so when we're doing this. Yeah, we're, we're like, are we getting it? Are we not? We don't know. What are we getting? And so it's been a bit of a, a challenge with that, and that's up and down.
Any more questions for us? We have our last slide.
Oh, you have the last slide?
No, I think it's just.
That's the last slide?
Thank you.
That's your ask slide?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, any other questions still? Kathleen, any other questions?
No, I don't think so.
All right, well, that'll do it. Our next meeting will be Thursday morning with the county reporter to discuss his budget request. So until then, we're adjourned.